Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call, Jason?
Hey, Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
And Councilmember Van.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items to report this evening. The Renton Senior Talent Showcase, formerly Senior Review, is looking for singers, dancers, and entertainers age 50-plus to share their talents with the community. Those interested should plan to attend a mandatory meeting on Wednesday, March 11, at 10:00 a.m. in the Senior Activity Center Auditorium. Call 425-430-6633 for more information. There will be two performances of the 2020 Senior Talent Showcase, Thursday, May 7, at 1:00 p.m., and Friday, May 8, at 7:00 p.m. Both performances will be held at Carco Theater. Connect and learn from experts in gardening, beekeeping, food, animals, and the environment at the annual Suburban Farm and Garden Expo. Join us on Saturday, March 7, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the North Highlands Neighborhood Center. Bring plants and seeds to share at the Plant and Seed Swap, plus learn how to compost, recycle, and prevent waste. Contact Carrie Olson at 425-430-7214 for more information. And lastly, less than three weeks until 2020 census invitations are mailed to your home. Since 1790, the Constitution has mandated every person in the United States is counted every 10 years. The census provides more than $675 billion in federal funds to support housing, education, transportation, employment, health care, and public policy. The census captures basic information such as name, age, sex, Hispanic origin, race and ethnicity, relationship of household members, and homeownership status. Federal law protects your census responses; your responses can only be used to produce statistics. We ask everyone to take part and return their census form because Renton counts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. In addition to the administrative report, I've also asked staff to give us a quick briefing. We're in a very unique time these days with the coronavirus out there, and I'd like to have Mindy give us a little update.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's nice to see new faces. My name's Mindy Matson. I'm on the emergency management team here with the city, and I'm here tonight just to give you kind of an overview of the coronavirus. Am I doing something to cause that?
I think you might be a little close.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with some numbers, keeping in mind that this may have changed between when I left my desk and when I got here. This is a very dynamic situation. We have, in King County, 14 confirmed cases, including five deaths. University of Washington Valley Medical Center has one of those cases right now. In Washington State, we have 18 confirmed cases, including five deaths. Currently, there are 231 people in the state of Washington that are under health supervision. They sequenced the genome this weekend, and what that told us was that this virus has actually been present for about six weeks in our community here. So we haven't known about it till now, but it has been around. So what does the coronavirus look like? It's a respiratory virus. It's transmitted through droplets. It causes fever, cough, and difficulty breathing. It's important to remember that in most people, 80% of people, it's a mild reaction that you have, more like a cold, light flu, but not anything that's very serious or causes complications. People who are at higher risk are seniors, and also people who have chronic underlying medical conditions. Most viruses, children are also included, but for some reason, this virus does not seem to negatively impact children disproportionately. So the steps that public health is taking, there are tremendous things going on at the federal, state, and local level. They're all working in conjunction. The CDC arrived this week, so they have a team on the ground that's helping our local folks kind of ramp up their efforts. They're doing round-the-clock surveillance and investigation. They're doing contact tracing, so when they know they've had an exposure, they'll go talk to that person and find out who else they've been in communication and contact with. They're doing coordinated wraparound services for those 231 people that are under investigation. So that means if they need medication, or groceries delivered, or water, things like that, they're supporting those people that are under public health surveillance in that way. We have a testing lab here in Washington that was approved on Friday to do its own testing, so as opposed to having to send every test back to the CDC in Atlanta, we can validate testing here. And there's another lab that's set to go live at the University of Washington Medical Center very soon, if it hasn't already. They're also doing outreach to general and special populations, including language translations of many of their products. They're also doing things for homeless people by offering training for people who work in shelters, and also they have purchased a hotel, which will be operational by the end of the week, and they're also bringing in trailers so that people who are living with homelessness have a place to recover if they do get ill. Okay, the last thing that they're doing is there's been considerable stigma associated with this that's been directed with people of different race, ethnicity, or country of origin, and so they're definitely getting the message out there that coronavirus does not discriminate, and we should not discriminate as well. So steps we're taking here in Renton, we are 24/7 monitoring and emergency management. We're working in very close communication with public health. We're providing situational awareness to the policymakers so they can have situation awareness to make decisions. We are revisiting our COOP plan, our continuity of operations plan, to make sure that it's up to date and valid for what we need it for. We're maintaining tight communication with the RFA to see what the impacts are to them and see if they need any support. We're maintaining up-to-date info on the website. We're pushing outreach information from public health to the public via various social media channels. Administrators are considering their next steps to minimize the impact to the public and also to our city staff. And we're providing mutual aid to King County Public Health. My partner, Gillian Edge, is working up there in their EOC this week to help support them because they have very much ramped up operations right now. And lastly, we're staying alert and nimble. There's going to be more to come as this event evolves, for sure. So steps we can all take, and you've heard it, but I'm going to say them again, you need to wash your hands and use hand sanitizer, covering your mouth or nose when you cough, so like this, or if you use a tissue, throw the tissue right away. Stay home if you're sick. That's a huge one, and actually, that's why I'm here instead of my boss, is because she was having flu-like symptoms this morning, so she opted to stay home, which is what we're asking everyone to do if they have flu-like symptoms. Avoid people who are sick. Avoid handshakes and hugs or anything that gets you to touch somebody else. We have a link on the city's main webpage that'll take you straight to Public Health Seattle, King County. It's kingcounty.gov/covid. You can find all kinds of information there, and they update it multiple times during the day. So that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions at this time?
More to come.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Yeah, this is an extremely fluid situation, and as we get new information, we'll be updating the public and keeping our website up to date. I do want to impress upon people that, under this situation, the Department of Health is actually in charge, so the information is readily available on their website. Make sure you go to their website and not call them. They're extremely busy on the phone these days, so. Okay, next up, we have audience comments. We have a number of people signed up to speak. When I call your name, please come up to the stand. You have five minutes. State your name and the city that you're from. And first up is Inez Peterson.
Inez Peterson, Enham Claw, Washington. But I'm here tonight on behalf of a Renton citizen, and it's just glorious to be here again and to see a few of you that I know from, quote, "the old days." You know, the old days were like 14 years ago. I've been a lawyer now for six years. I don't make a whole lot of money, in fact, zero, because I help people who are desperately in need, like my current case is a disabled woman who'd lived in her home for over 50 years. And she was tricked into signing a quitclaim deed, and then that guy sold her deed. And so I'm trying to save her home. It's marvelous. I thank the Docnells every day. But I'm here today on behalf of Jeff Coley. He's a disabled Renton citizen who lost his home by sartori through the eminent domain, and he found a new home, which was almost suitable. It needed a lot of work to make it compatible for his wheelchair. But one of the problems he had was that if he parked in the garage, he couldn't open the doors to get his wheelchair out. So he got a carport, and that's where the code compliance people got a little too egregious. You know, disabled people are protected by the state ADA and the federal ADA, and which one of those laws has the most protections for the disabled is the one that rules. Now, I'm pretty sure that one of those laws protects Jeff Coley's right to open his car door, get his wheelchair out, or get it in without being buffeted by the weather. So hence his wonderful carport. So he was required by the city to get an engineering study. They wouldn't accept the manufacturer's specs. $3,800 this man had to pay for that. And then he's paid another $1,200 in fees. Now, Alex Tuttle and I have been working on this for months now. We have an agreement which should settle all the issues, except for one thing. We believe that Jeff should be refunded his $1,200. But that requires your approval, and so that's why I'm here tonight, just to ask you to please approve that. And I have a letter to give to Jason, and I would leave that question in your able hands. I think the city of Renton is, well, treating the disabled is probably one of your little issues in your city documents. And what happened here was, it just had to be an inadvertent, you know, screw-up that just compounded. But there's an easy way to fix it, and I implore you to improve that refund to Jeff Coley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I'm not sure I can read the handwriting. I think it's Carl?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess worse every time I come in here. I'll make it as sure as I can. I live up off 132nd Street, above the Spot Tavern.
I'm sorry, can you state your name again?
Yeah, Earl Kiminki, K-I-M-I-N-K-I. And Friday and Saturday nights, boys were out there, romping and stomping, excessive noise, running around the neighborhoods with their little Toyotas wherever they're driving. And at midnight, I'd like to be asleep at midnight instead of out there counting cars and that. And the last time I was here, as I was walking, I heard some councilman who was saying, "Next time, we'll just refer him to the police department." So I went and seen the police department. A sergeant or whatever he was, and I explained the situation, breath of noise, and trouble sleeping at night from 12 to 3:00, and married off the, you know, creel them up, license registration, insurance, the front license plate. If he's coming out of the spot, they've been drinking, get a breathalyzer test on him. If they're over .08, bring him in. And he said to me, "Well, you know they have rights." I says, "They have rights to break the law? The excessive noise at all hours of the night from 12 to 3:00? When do I have my right to sleep?" He says, "You need a white noise thing to cover up." I got white noise from CTAC, running up the jets from 6:00 to 9:00 at night. I got white noise from the Channel 7 and Channel 5 helicopters. I got white noise from 167. I can bed by that, because I can go to sleep at 7:30, 12 o'clock, and that don't wake me up. But those guys are romping and stomping, and they just make fun of the law. There's laws out there to protect us, normal citizens who like to get a good night's sleep. Why don't they use the law? They don't just, in the last time I came in, the ex-mayor says, "Well, they're not racing on East Valley Road anymore. No, they moved across 43rd into Kent." So Renton cops can't go out past 43rd, and Kent cops don't have enough officers to cover them up. So now they're down there by the Great Wall and that 7-Eleven there, screw with the guy at 7-Eleven, where he can't use his pumps, he can't get his nighttime deliveries because those cars are parked all over his lot. So what do we do? What can we do to stop those guys from making all that noise at that time of the morning? I'd like to go down there and just sit in the Himalayan coffee shop, their parking lot, with a council member, and we can sit there and watch them and listen to them and see what it sounds like. I'm a legal citizen. I don't try not to run red lights. I try to keep the speed limit down, and these guys are just above the law. Help.
Are you finished, and then I'll reply here?
Pretty much.
Okay. Well, I know that we have spent a lot, and the council has approved a lot of financing and effort to try and take care of the racing in the valley, in the jurisdiction, the area that we have a jurisdiction over. What I'm going to do is ask you to step to the back. Back here, the actual chief of police is back there, and we can find out what is going on, what we're doing about some of the issues that you're dealing with right now. So it is very frustrating. I agree. I can hear them coming down 167 myself, so I do know what you're talking about.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Have a nice week.
Thank you. Okay, next is Diane Poholke.
Hi, my name is Diane Poholke. I work for ProFlight Aviation on the Renton Airport. Am I supposed to give the address?
No, Renton's fine. Thank you.
The reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for hearing about, from the Renton tenants, about our issues with the new update plan and taking all of that. And I wanted to say thank you, Mayor, for coming to the last Renton Airport Advisory Committee and Councilman Corman. And I wanted to clarify, there's been a lot of discussion that what the council is doing is hiring someone to look at what it would take to get the airport recertified, or if someone has ever done it. I'm not quite sure what they're actually doing, because I think there was enough people and technical assistants on the rec that we know it's never been done, but that's kind of how aviation is always with the rules as they change through the years. But what would it take to get it changed, you know, like what would be the first 10 steps and how, you know, something basic like that? I just wanted to, I just don't know exactly what exactly it is that the questions they're going to answer.
Yeah, we could probably answer that for you. Yes, Ren?
I was going to ask if you wanted to try and answer, or do you want me to answer?
We could probably do it together here. You go ahead and start.
Yeah, so my understanding is that we want to, we do want to, we would like to challenge the designation. As a city, we feel that it's going to result in a lot of costs and a lot of change, and a lot of change that we're not desiring right now. And so this really is about challenging the designation. But it's possible that where you got the mixed message, I mean, it could have even been from me, inasmuch as we're going into it, the first step is to find out really what, you know, what we might be able to control and how we might be able to approach the designation and having it revisited. And so we know there's legal aspects to it, there's political aspects to it, there's technical aspects to it, there's community involvement aspects. And so we're seeking some assistance from outside council on how to approach that. But I want to say, at least speaking for myself, and I think I'm speaking for others up here, it's not just that we're looking to see. I mean, our intent is to, you know, get a revisit or readjustment of that if we can.
So I would take a little bit of a softer approach than that. I think that this is such a unique airport and a unique situation that what we're really doing is finding out what pathway we do have available to us. You know, it's hard to, under the guidelines that are put forth by the FAA, we are, you know, we fall under that designation. So fighting against a designation which we, you know, fully abide by, it's hard to do that. So it really is a matter of finding out what the options available to us are. That being said, we understand the impacts to the businesses and the general aviation down there, and frankly, the entire city. So it's definitely in everybody's best interest that we find a pathway that's suitable for the entire city. So I hope that answers your question.
Right. I think, yeah, I think that was what I had thought we had heard, and that does answer my question. I guess I wanted to make sure that we were looking for alternate, maybe not only challenging, but is there another path to go that we could, you know, such, there's been a lot of suggestions on the tower and how much it costs, and because the cost of, the last estimate I saw of the cost was half a billion, you know, of which the FAA picks up, you know, 90%, well, $450 million, if there's another path, that's a lot of money to save the FAA. There's different paths to go. I'm glad. I just wanted to make sure that we were exploring all our options that way. Thank you very much.
All right.
And once again, thank you, the council, for listening to us. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have one more person, Jason Collins.
Serious stuff. I'm sorry that you guys have to deal with it. I drew a new logo for City of Renton that we're coming up with. Anyway, so I nined it factory. I'm having way too much fun. So she told me to draw ducks. I should have stuck to ducks. My name's Jason Collins. I've lived in Renton for four, five years. I've lived and worked here, and then, anyway, this is going to come up in a second. I was working 70 hours a week my whole life, right, and then I had an employer fire me on my birthday because the wife winked at me and talked crap about me to the police department and every other employer, and I lost my job. And so, like, you can go from working 70 hours a week and making $96 a year to homeless really quick, right? So just keep this in mind. The whole Riley thing is why it comes up, right, is he got one guy who, in the community, always kind of had a temper, right, because of reasonable reasons, when you're disabled, right, you kind of get frustrated easier. I have Asperger's, so I have violent outbursts, they say, but like, I'll just tell you off. I'd like lip off all the time. All the time I lip off on everybody, and I normally know my shit when I'm lipping off. So he's like, he's like, I actually got hit by him in a breakfast once, and I think somebody paid him 20 bucks. The next thing I know, I'm getting like chased around every single time I see the guy, right? Like, so even the thought of getting paid 20 bucks to hit somebody would cause the situation to escalate to a point where maybe the other person might have been like straight chased down the street and like walking into traffic, like trying to get him to stop me like twice. All right, like, this is no joke. Too many witnesses, right? So it's like, I know he's a really nice guy, and if you look at the paper, right, they got a picture of him splitting a cupcake with six different people on his own birthday, all right? So the guy is like a really nice guy, all in all, so it's like an absolute tragic thing to have happen to a group of people, period, no matter whether or not they were homeless or anything, but homelessness keeps on coming up, and homelessness does not discriminate, all right? So you can't sit there and say that we have a homeless encampment where these things happen and then say that this is because of the homeless, right, when homelessness doesn't discriminate. At the same time, do you see the problem with the loop, right? So at any point in time, any of us could kill anybody, all right? So that's the whole point of the whole thing. But, look, I like, really am sorry for the loss for the parents, and I'm sorry for the person that was friends with the person for years and actually stopped the fight between me and him. So if that means anything to you, like, the girl would try to like step in for her buddy to stop them from getting arrested, all right? So these are like people that know each other, and none of that gets said, and it's really sad. And I just, but it's just all really sad. So I don't know, I know there's like rewards and all this. I always stay out of the news, right? I like stay off of it because I don't think it always makes sense. So just like when you're sitting there and you're thinking about it, it wasn't like an aggressive attack on somebody, like, it was probably like an accidental thing, right? But like, I don't know, I don't even know how to go about it, but like, when there's a homeless encampment, then there's obviously a housing crisis, and to have homelessness and a housing crisis at the same time is neglect on the city's fault and the state and the government for not noticing and building low-income housing. And I like drafted a bunch of it, like just situations where you can factory, you could factory build housing to be erected on site. Like in China, they do, they have a three-minute-long video of a seven days where they put together a six-story apartment complex in seven days, all right? Like, I mean, like, if you guys like looked outside the box, you could not only employ people, flipping the industry back the right way, but fine, like, if you have the labor already there, right, and like that REACH program's pushing like 56, 60 people, and I don't know how many you have in jail right now, right? Like, so there's over 100 people you could put to work tomorrow if you actually pulled your shit together. Anyway, but have a good day. I just like really wanted to advocate for the fact that that was a tragic thing to have happen to any of you. Who is it, the Biden, no, not Biden, but the vice president that shot his own best friend while he was out hunting, right? I mean, like, these things happen, so just have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Perez.
I move that the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the council consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we're up, unfinished business. Council President?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Finance Committee has two committee reports.
Finance Committee Committee Report, Agreement for a Grant Award to the Rent Housing Authority. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to, one, approve the General Fund and Density Fee Affordable Rental Housing Agreement with Rent Housing Authority for the Sunset Oaks Apartments, and, two, authorize the mayor to execute said agreement in substantially the same form. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince?
I move to council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council committee reports be passed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
The final report from the Finance Committee is regarding the Local Agency Supplemental Number One to an agreement with Washita for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the local agency agreement supplement number one to contract number 15006 with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the obligation of grant funding and all subsequent agreements necessary to accomplish the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince?
I move the-
I move that council concur in the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van, oh, sorry, Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and up next is legislation.
Okay, we have a resolution regarding proclaiming an emergency. This is regarding the winter storms earlier in January this year. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, proclaiming an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have a series of ordinances that are all for second and final reading. The first ordinance is regarding outdoor storage. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4260M, 4280A, 29, 42110A, 42110B, C, and 42110D3B3 in section 41190 of the Rent Municipal Code by classifying bulk storage in the zoning use table, permitting bulk storage in industrial zones, providing for minimum separation distances from residential zoning designation, simplifying storage facilities bulk in section 44110, adding bulk storage to the definitions of storage indoor, storage outdoor, storage self-service, and storage vehicle in section 411190, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
I move adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's a roll call.
Oh, second order, okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
And Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding design requirements for assisted living. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 43100B1B of the Rent Municipal Code by revising design district applicability regulations in the city's urban design districts B and D, yes, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
I move adoption of this ordinance as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh geez, we're back to this again. Roll call, they're all roll calls.
All roll call, yes, sir. Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
And Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Thank you.
Next is regarding the conditional use permit criteria ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4145G3, G4, 42120A and B, and C, and 42130A and 42130B, and section 4930 of the Rent Municipal Code revising conditional use permit criteria, adding new subsections 4930F and 4930G regarding decision criteria for height increases and density increases, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
I move adoption of this ordinance as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be adopted. Please have a roll call.
Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
And Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Thank you.
The final ordinance is regarding open space requirements. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 42115E2 of the Rent Municipal Code amending residential standards for common open space, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
I move adoption of this ordinance as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be adopted. Please have a roll call.
Okay, Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Corman.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
And Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Thank you. Up next, we have new business. Council President Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March 9th, will be no meetings. And on Monday, March 16th, at 5:30, we will have the Committee of the Hall in the Conference Center. There are two items on the agenda, sound transit, strategic plan, and emerging issues. That will be it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on March 16th, it's a Monday, at 4:00 PM, we'll have a Planning and Development Committee meeting in the council conference room. Three items on that agenda. The first is 2020 CED work program, second item is docket number 14, and the third item is emerging issues in CED, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March 16th, at 3:00 PM in the council conference room, the Finance Committee will meet. We have three items on the agenda, housing action plan, grant agreement, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that the Transportation Committee will be meeting at 5:00 PM in the council conference room on Monday, March 16th. There are three items on the agenda, Washita acquisitions for I-405 and South Portner Changes Right-Away, 2021 through 2026, TIP project list review, and finally, emerging issues in transportation, specifically airport and Wells/Williams closures. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two items. The first is that I would like to refer to the Utilities Committee sourcing electricity for city facilities from renewable energy.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes.
It's a motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole motion.
To refer to the Utilities Committee sourcing electricity for city facilities from renewable sources.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we source renewable energy.
City facilities.
For city facilities.
Yeah, for city utilities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. The second is that on March 16th, at 4:30 PM in the council conference room, Utilities Committee will be meeting. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the Lower Cedar River flood risk reduction study, and the second is emerging issues in utilities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up, we have executive session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council meeting resets into executive session for 15 minutes to consider potential litigation, RCW 4230110, one aye. And we will not be taking a final action, and the council meeting will be adjourned when the executive session adjures.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.